So a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. My name is Emily Mylan. I'm the Assistant Director here at the library and I'm also a member of Harwich Voter Information Committee. In my second term on the committee, I think. If I did my math right, yes. Fifth year. And I really enjoyed working with the committee to put together programs like these, so thank you for joining us today. If everyone can just make sure that their cellphones are on silent or quiet, right? That after this next conference, I'm not signaling anyone else. A couple of other housekeeping emergency exits here. There are restrooms right out in the lobby outside, just so you know where those are. So the reason that we decided to put this program together, there was a Know Your Town Program in Harwich before. Jamie, if you were in here, you might have heard Jamie talk a little bit about that. But we also had learned about a program in the town of Barnstable, a civic leadership academy. It was a six-week intensive learning series that the town has been hosting for about a decade now, I think. It's been really successful. It sounds kind of like our citizens' police academy here in Harwich. So we thought this would be kind of a nice alternative to that. Rather than expecting you to show up every Wednesday night for six weeks, we're going to offer you this series of every other Tuesday in the afternoon. And we'll be featuring different department heads as we go through. So the idea is basically for these guys to have an opportunity to answer some basic questions. What is your department's mission? What challenges do you face? How do you interact with other departments? Talk a little bit about the annual budget. You know, all town departments are funded a little bit differently. Some have revolving funds and other things. So as we go through the series, you'll learn a little bit more about how that works. And are there ways that residents or voters can participate or volunteer or be involved in a committee or board associated with the different departments? We're a voter information committee, so we like to encourage you to be active and involved and join another committee or board. So we'll be talking about that as we go through as well. So the idea is to give residents a general overview of each department, so this is, you know, general information. And we thought a good way to start out would be with our Chair, the Board of Selectmen, Larry Valentine to my left, Joe Howard, our Acting Town Administrator, and Anita, our town clerk. Thank you guys all for coming. I appreciate it. And we're really happy to have you here. So I'm going to pass the mic off. Larry's already got it. And we're going to go through, we're going to give everyone a chance to go through the four questions that we put together, which we'll be posting up here. We'll give everyone a chance to go through and answer those, and then we'll do questions at the end. Okay? So that's our plan.
Thanks for coming out this afternoon. Is this on?
I'll check and see if it's on.
I don't want Jamie yelling right away for, is it on yet?
Yeah, hold it a little bit.
Again, thanks for coming out. I must admit that I failed to read my emails, so I didn't prepare for this presentation. Fortunately though, I have two experts with me on the table. They can answer a lot of the questions. And I'm hoping that there'll be questions after this discussion that we can get into. And thanks, Emily, for putting it on and the library for hosting this. The Board of Selectmen is, I'm probably repeating what you all know, but we're a board of five elected members. We have alternate terms. Two of us, our term ends this year in May. But our primary function is to set policy with resident input, resident staff input. We set policy that then we try to get together and have that taken to town meeting for a further vote, and then it's carried out by our town administrator and staff. We don't administer the town. We work through the town administrator. The people that report to that, we actually vote on and hire the town administrator, the police chief, the fire chief, the town accountant, town treasurer. And so there was a body. I used to joke at one time that if you want to bribe someone, I'm the one to bribe because I have absolutely no authority over anyone. We're now like a regulatory committee, a planning or a conservation that can prevent things from happening. Everything we do has to go through town meeting for approval. We make recommendations via the town warrant article. And that's really our primary focus at the moment is to put together the articles for our town meeting, so we hopefully can present town residents a well thought-out strategy of where the town is headed. And as far as issues, and Joel speaks to this more, every year, one of our primary discussion points and debates and arguments concerns the budget. We're now at, Joel reminds me, a little over $7 million budget, about 45% of that is schools. The rest of it is for our operations. And we also have in this year's budget about $18 million proposed for capital improvements. And that's a big hit. That'll be another huge discussion. I'm now apologizing for the money we spent in the past because it's sponsored our Malmo High School, where Cape Tech, a new fire station, all this needed. And of course, we're now embarked on a sewer program that is very expensive, but I think, you know, it's required that we move ahead. And our big discussion on that is how do we do it in a cost-efficient way that doesn't bury us all in extra taxes? As you know, over and over again, taxes are going up. Just as a general comment, we're also right now focused on recruiting the town administrator. Joel's doing a great job filling in on the interim basis, but that's occupying our time. I will say, as I've said in other places, we're stepping through this process in a very careful and conscientious way for a couple of reasons. One is we have an interim town manager who's doing a great job, gives us some freedom. We also have fantastic town staff. And so we have some freedom as a town to move ahead in a very thoughtful way. That's what our intent is. We've started by appointing a screening committee, and we're looking out, a search committee helps get the best person into town. To the other questions.
All right. So the next question was, how does your department interact with other departments? Which I think you covered some, but...
Well, for us, it's pretty easy. We go here and say, "Joe, what do you think about moving ahead in this project?" And then Joe comes back and he either does it, or says, "That's the dumbest idea I've heard of," and then we debate it a little more. And of course, we're also blessed with Town Forkus. I'm not going to say how many years it did, because I'm not getting into that. But a lot of experience. And we all, she's our go-to person on a lot of issues regarding the town charter, how we're moving ahead. So that's how we go through this. We do interact with the department heads through the committees. Each of us are assigned liaisons through various committees. I know I'm personally on planning, conservation commission, zoning board of appeals. We try to attend, I try to attend a lot of those meetings and get feedback from how those committees are working and how the department heads feel about life in general and how the regulations are going. Next question is the annual budget. I think I referred to that, Emily. We have our job in front of us right now, because in essence, one of our tasks, and we've done better some years and not so good other years, is how do we prioritize our standing? And that is a tough challenge. We all try to be fair, and we have a big debates, but all of us would like to do a lot in town. There's always things we can do better, and we can provide more services, but it all comes with a cost. And we're not like the federal government. We can't just raise the, borrow more money. We have to pay for it each year. So anything that we spend money on, we have to basically raise property taxes. Property taxes account for, Joe helped me out, probably 90% of our revenue.
Certainly well over 80%, yeah.
And so, and that all hits us. And this year's, you know, been a good news bad news year. I'm told from Richard Waystack, our assessors group, that housing, real estate values in Harwich has gone up a lot. That's like, for me, I'm not planning on selling, so that doesn't owe me a lot, but that's good news. The economy's booming, we're booming in town. The bad news is, is that that means our taxes are going up, because the real estate values are going up. In addition to that, we have debt coming down on this project that we've signed off on, a few of them I mentioned. But that's our, in that regard, I think it's later on, but we welcome, and I say this seriously, we welcome any input, any of you have on your thoughts on priorities, what the town needs. We try to take that input seriously. We debate it, discuss it, and we try to pay attention. The last question is, well, how can you help? That's not exactly a question, is it? How can you help? Well, we maintain on the website always a list of vacancies in our committees, and we very much hope that you volunteer for that. The more, the broader the range of people volunteering for those committees, the more input we have. In a perfect world, we have a range of ages, of sexes, of places they live in town, so we have a broad range of discussion. In addition to that, though, all these committees are open. You know, the agendas are published, the admins are out, and everyone is welcome to attend every meeting and participate, even if they're not part of the committee member. I hate to get in the position of, the story is, some years ago, I was on the steering committee of the Pleasant Bay Alliance, which we maybe monthly. This one particular meeting, a woman showed up to discuss a point in the alliance, and I swear to God, we all of us were almost hugging her. We couldn't believe that someone actually showed up to our committee. And this is a committee that actually has a lot of action protecting Pleasant Bay. We support it with town finances, they help us with sewer wastewater projects, they maintain Pleasant Bay, and it's just, so it's not only, anyone shows up to a committee, it will be welcomed beyond belief. And we have, as opposed to, well, I shouldn't say it that way, our committees, I would think, if not 100%, 99%, run the committees in a very structured, respectful manner. The regulatory committees have to make decisions that are not always well received by the applicant, but every committee listens to them, tries to find a compromise work within the regulatory process. They have to always stay within the regulatory framework, so some of their hands are tied. But volunteer and just show up, talk to us, contact us. We all are grateful for any reaction you give and tell us what we're, not only what we're doing wrong, by the way, occasionally you can tell us what we're doing right. So we appreciate that. And I think I'll stop there.
Yeah. Thank you, Larry. I appreciate it.
That's your experts.
Oh, boy. Excuse me. Good afternoon, folks. Thanks for letting me be a part of this, Emily, and Chris, and the rest of you committee. As Emily said, I'm Joe Powers, and I'm the actor. I'm the acting administrator. Just before that, I had the enjoyable position of the Assistant Town Administrator, but I do welcome the opportunity to be here today to talk as it's been outlined, but also I'm very grateful to be able to serve in the role presently as Acting Administrator. We've got a lot going on in our town, and I'm truly thrilled to be a part of it and to be able to sit between two stalwarts of our town government. So one of these three kids doesn't belong here, but it is great to be here. So I'm going to take my notes back that I loaned to Larry. Specifically, as Acting Administrator, I am technically the department head for the Administration Department. And so for the Administration Department, we administer the budgets overall, if you will, of the town, but we certainly are responsible for the bylaws and policies, the bylaws that are adopted by town meeting and the policies that are enacted by the board, and that's what we do on a regular basis. Presently, the Administration Department includes myself. We have a familiar name and face in blah blah, who's come back to help me as the interim Assistant Administrator. We also have Patty McCure as Executive Assistant, Danielle Delaney, and on loan from planning, Elaine Banta. So for the first time in a long time, I feel that the Administration Department is fully staffed, and that's because the focus is, as Larry can tell you, I think, no, I know there are exactly 111 days till the annual town meeting. And that's been my focus since November 18th, because that's what matters in our form of government, is the town meeting process, as Larry's talked about, with the operating budget, the capital budget and everything that goes with that, as well as any bylaw changes. So all eyes are now fully focused and attentive to the town meeting process, where we're going to get into a lot of the, what the question referred to as challenges. And I will tell you, I think there are folks that will support this. I do not look at challenges, I look at opportunities. And I say that because when I did have a chance to meet, to offer my credentials to be the Assistant Town Administrator, they asked me, "Where did I see myself in five years?" And what I said was, "I want to be in a place where there are challenges, because challenges are opportunities for growth." I know it sounds trite, but I really believe that. Beyond that, as an administrator, the challenges that we face are an opportunity to offer a solution to the benefit of our town, to offer solutions to make our town better. So I really do view the challenges that Larry has talked about, that the board faces, as an opportunity, an opportunity to do things better, and hopefully always an opportunity to grow. I'm going to use that as my segue to question number two. I think the simplest answer for what does the Administration Department do? We are the primary point of contact for all departments within all departments. Next week, I'll have a chance to preside over my third consecutive department head meeting, which is a wonderful collection of individuals who do great work for the town, and it's also a wonderful collection of subject matter experts. I believe we have in the order of 22 separate departments, and we meet on a regular basis to get into those challenges, which are opportunities for solution. The actual budget for the Administration Department itself is approximately $542,000 for last year. I'm endeavoring to continue to keep that at $542,000 for the next fiscal year, to be consistent with the budget messages that we've given to department heads. And within that, obviously, we have the salary and wages of staff, but we have a number of operating capital budgets within that as well. And then I think, lastly, what are the ways that the residents and voters can participate to build on what Larry said? We're always of the same mind. I think, Emily, you said it, Larry said it, I'll say it, and I believe our esteemed and dear town clerk will say, we have committees, and we need people to serve on those committees, because those committees have a vital role in informing the decisions that will be made by town meeting and by the Board of Selectmen. So we always remain in that refrain of, please, join the committees that we have, we need your help. And specifically, as the Acting Administrator, I would say, as Larry has said, remain engaged. Keep us honest, keep us on our toes. We work for you, we work through town meeting. So with events like this, with selectmen's meetings, town meetings and all that, your presence and participation are vital to our form of government, because you need to keep us engaged, and you need to make sure that we're doing as the town needs us to do.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm last on the totem pole here. My name is Anita Dusset, for those in the audience that don't know me. I have the privilege of, and the honor of, serving the town. As your town clerk since 1992, I've been involved in the town in different venues for over 40 years. So being that the mission or the challenges for my department, it's so hard to try to describe in a nutshell what a town clerk would do. Basically, there's two halves of my house. I have voter registration, census information, and vital records. So basically, I'm the record keeper for every record that comes through the town I'm responsible for. I also have been given the honor of being the Records Access Officer through the state, which means every time anyone asks or requests a record of the town, it comes through me, and then I have to channel it through the different department. So basically, I am your chief records officer for the entire town. Also, I have the privilege and the honor of also running your elections. And I also am in charge of recording those elections correctly, also reporting them to the state, as well as to our town officials when we have our own town elections, and when we have the federal elections, which we have a very busy election calendar this year. So the federal elections, I'm also responsible to report all of that information to the federal government. I'm sorry. I have two documents here. Emily, you said that you'd like to know the history of the town clerk. Well, if you go online and you Google, which I did, the history of municipal clerks, it will bring you back to the early times, and it's back to biblical times, and you can read the whole history of it right then and there, which is really pretty fascinating. When I downloaded it myself, and I've got a copy of it here, but anyone can obviously go on the internet and find it. It is very interesting. I also have, I'm going to go to the second question, and how I interact with different departments? Well, my department interacts with every department and committee and commission and board within the town, as well as the state. I'm responsible, like I had said earlier, to deal with the state on all kinds of levels. I will read you something from, I have here in my possession, it's called "The Position of the Town Clerk in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts," and it's called "The Introduction." And in this is the 31-page that the Secretary of State put out, and which I'm responsible for 278 things, to which I am not going to go over every single one. However, I like this paragraph, so if you will indulge me for a minute, I would like to read this. It says, "The office of the town clerk traditionally, and to a large degree presently, can be compared to the hub around which the wheel of local government revolves. The spokes of the wheel represent the various boards, departments, and committees within the government, to which the town clerk relates in a direct way. The rim of the wheel represents in many segments of state and county government for which many of the town clerk officials' duties and responsibilities stem." So it's not only to the town that I am responsible for, I'm also responsible to the state and also to county. You mentioned the third question, I will go on, is the budget. My budget, and I'll be perfectly honest, I really didn't look at the amount this year, but my budget, because of the events that will happen during that year, will fluctuate largely. For some years, we might have an event of maybe one, you know, town meeting and one election, and then other years, I could have up to four, and depending on if they have a special town meeting or a special election, could be as upwards as this year, it could be maybe up to five or six, depending on what we face in a year. And those have to be staffed, and I have to, you know, make sure that we have the people to man all the elections, and it's a nice undertaking, if I can put it nicely. And the line items do, like I said, it's the salary and wages and the professional services that I would offer for the town. And what are the citizens or volunteers that could participate in my office? Well, to tell you the truth, that would be kind of difficult. I do have positions in my office, I do have a Board of Registros, and the board is made up of the political designation of the town clerk. In other words, if the town clerk is registered in a Republican Party, then the other, there's a four-member board, they would be made up of, the other three members would be made up of the designation of the town clerk. So there would be one other Republican, and then two Democrats. How those are selected is they come from the Democratic and Town Committees, vote to put three names forward to the Board of Selectmen for a choice of one person to be voted on to be on the member of the board, as a member of the Board of Registros. And that's done under state law. And as far as the election workers are concerned, the election workers also follow state law. What we do every year is the Board of Selectmen's office sends out a letter to each of the respective Democrat or Republican Town Committees and ask them for names of lists of people that would be willing to serve as election workers. These lists are provided to the town clerk, the town clerk will then certify that they are either the Democrat or Republican parties, and then those lists is brought before the Board of Selectmen for appointment. This all falls under state law. So I think I've covered just about everything.
If you so much. So I just have to say, it's really amazing to look at how much your office is responsible for. I wouldn't say you're lowest on the totem pole. I didn't...
Yeah, I kind of, for my personality, and it's only been the way that I've been, and for people that really know me, I prefer to be much in the background, doing the best that I can to make sure that everybody looks good in the front. So to have me in the forefront kind of makes me a little, ah, I don't know, I think I'd like to make everybody look good.
Well, we really appreciate your...
How easy, y'all.
All right. So thank you all so much. I feel like that was really informative. I know I learned a lot, and I felt like I knew a lot to begin with, because I've been a part of Voter Information Committee for a while, and been in town for 15 years, but that was really informative. So thank you very much. We, as we said at the beginning, the purpose of these programs is to give everyone a general overview of the different areas of town government, what they do, what they're responsible for, who they're working with actively. So we'll open it up to questions about some of the things that you've heard today. Before we do that, I do want to mention that Voter Information Committee will be hosting several other programs, as Larry said, leading up to town meeting. You know, we have the warrant review that we'll be doing, we'll also be doing a candidate's forum for any open elected officials and for boards and committees. So we'll be doing some other things that might address some really specific questions. But if you have some general questions about the things we heard today, we'll open it up. Can I ask? Yeah, can I ask if someone doesn't mind? Because we're recording, is this really helpful for us to, if you'll use the microphones when you ask your question, so that it gets recorded on video?
So I have a couple of questions, but I'll just ask one now. It has to do, Larry, something that you said, taxes go up because values go up in town. That doesn't make sense to me. I would think if we had higher values here, that it would help reduce our taxes. Could you explain that? Or am I misunderstanding?
The taxes, our tax rate is set by what our budget is. But the, and so that's really the driving force, but because the assessments go up, that allows us to raise the taxes and meet our budget needs. No, which is, they're set on the assessed value of your home, is what your tax rate is, amount of taxes you pay, and that covers, but, and then the, but the driving, if I misspoke, the driving force of that is what our expenses are, operating budget plus debt. But it allows us to grow our budget some, to meet our needs if the assessed values go up.
I have a follow-up, sorry for a follow-up question to that. So the only way that we really can reduce our taxes is to increase our tax base. Is that correct?
That's one of the ways, sure.
To get, to find new tax payers.
Right, pocket tax, or new taxes, if the economy grows and the businesses have been good.
And does the town have that ability? Do we have the space? Do we have the opportunities? Is that something that's being looked into?
Our allowed, and I'll get Joel for some better definition of this, but our allowable moderate tax does go up each year, based on the growth in town. That allows us to tax more. We also can raise our taxes up to two and a half percent. Over that, we have to go to an override, a valid override, to raise the taxes above that. In Harwich, our taxes have grown too, because our businesses are doing well. Harwich has some, you know, we have great, we've become the restaurant place to be, right? On the Cape? Maybe, may not be a complete, but that increases some of the money we have coming in as well. Hopefully that helps. Joey, you want to...
Sure. If I understood part of the question, that the tax rates that the town has, there's obviously residential, commercial, the town could proceed towards industrial or other type of tax bases. Now, there's considerations around that would be obvious. Now, there's considerations around that would be obvious, our zoning, where and if we would allow industrial. However, that sort of conversation has a long-lasting impact on the quality of the town. So while we could expand our tax base as far as types of taxable properties, there's an offsetting conversation. So presently, I think the way that we handle property taxes now, split amongst residential and commercial, is the way to go. To your other question, if we expand our programs, we expand our tax base, expands our tax bill. The effort that we're undergoing right now is analyzing the budget for limited growth to the budget. And perhaps there are times when we may have to analyze cuts to programs. So if we can't expand the tax base and the revenue that's available, there is that other difficult management choice. I would not want to be the administrative who has to deal with that. Dark humor, but there you go.
Just to add to that, other towns have given different tax rates for commercial property versus residential. But Harwich is primarily a residential community. I think our businesses account for about 11% of our tax base. And so to make that switch, we actually penalize our businesses with little gain from our residents. And so it doesn't make sense because overall, we want to hold the entire economy to grow.
Talking about taxes, any more strenuous effort going to be towards collecting money from taxpayers who are on the tax lien list? I believe it's over $6 million right now.
I'll start with it.
Is that maybe the assessor's?
The short answer is yes. We've engaged, last several years, legal help to go after that tax lien, those tax holders. It turns out to be a more difficult problem than I had imagined going into it. Partly because on the Cape, we can get into situations where we have properties unknown, for instance, where they may have come down through generations and people don't, there's not real strong records of who owns what. And there may be parcels put together. And so we found it difficult to get a proper, that's the wrong term, attorney that's knowledgeable on the Cape and can follow this through. It's very time-consuming to deal with this. It's been one of our goals in the last several years, well, almost forever, but we've tried to up it the last couple of years and put money in the budget to hire an attorney, help us go after that, after those funds. It just turns out to be much more difficult process than I thought. And I don't want to pass the buck, but I think Anita, you've been involved with some of those discussions.
I really wouldn't have too much to say about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All I can say is we're working on it. I hate to say that, but it comes up every, a couple of times every year.
Can I take two for all of these questions? The assessor's office will be here and, excuse me, the treasurer tax collector will be here at future sessions, so they'll have more specific info.
All right. Do we have any other questions?
On the national scene, there's so much discussion about the registry of voters, people who are on the rolls here in each place to vote. Can you tell about what it's like in Harwich and how you keep the voting list current? Is there any attempt to remove people's names because of not responding to census or whatever? Can you talk about that? And also, I also want to know about the machines that we vote on. Because we have paper ballots, but we run them through a machine. Can you talk about that? Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with the first one. Okay, the voting list is updated every year by the census. So that's why it's very important that those of us that are registered voters here in the town of Harwich, to make sure that you respond to the annual census. That should be coming out within a week or so. Then we keep that updated. That's how the voting list stays updated. The other question I believe you had asked is weeding out people that have not responded to the census. By state law, they have to stay on the voting rolls for four years. It's what they refer to as inactive voters. And then once the four, I periodically, every year would check that so I can delete some voters that are no longer here. And we're required to keep them on the rolls for four years. Unless I hear from the people telling me that they do not live here. The only way I can accept that is if they put it in writing. Okay, and did I answer the questions?
Yeah, the equipment.
That's, I'm getting to that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I answered that question for you.
How many, so how many voters do we have? And how many do you call over in that four-year cycle?
Well, right now, I think, if I can remember correctly off the top of my head, I think we have 10,000 and better registered voters. We have 12,000 and better year-round residents. The un, I'm sorry, the inactive voters that I have right now on my list are about 400. So it's not huge because I just called them out before we went to the census. So it's not huge, but it may end up, these are the years, the federal years, where people, the federal election are when a lot of people will try to come out and vote and say, wait a minute, I've been here for four years, but you hadn't responded to the census. So then they have to prove to me that they're here. Then we have to go through updating them and then just remind them once again that they have to respond to the census. Other than that, we're required by law to put them as inactive when they don't respond. The equipment that I use for, or that the town uses for voting, those are approved by the Secretary of State's office. So we will probably, within a few years, they're always improving on those types of systems. So probably within a few years, they'll probably, the town will probably be updating them. But right now, they are the top of the line. I've been through recounts across the state and the numbers don't change with the machines. So you've got, the town has invested in a really good equipment as far as your voting equipment is concerned. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking.
Mary, Mary Jane.
I'm not sure if this is the proper time to ask this, but if it's not, you can tell me to hold my question. I guess the biggest issue right now facing the town is the sewers. And you hear all sorts of things. You hear about pairing up with Chatham, you hear about going with Dennis Jarmuth. Can you update us on the status of that plan?
In 30 seconds or less.
We'll get the abbreviated version. As Jenny mentioned, we'll have the water superintendent and other department heads back who might be able to speak to that as well.
And let me give a plug for Jamie and the folks that keep our website alive because there is more information than anyone cares probably on the website. But the plan is there and so on. Very briefly, we signed a few years ago an agreement with Chatham to buy into their sewer plant. And primarily because that saves us a lot of money. We don't have to build our own plant. It also means we'll have a sewer plant in East Harwich. And so we are now putting in the first two-thirds of the number of homes that we hope to sewer, connect to that plant. You know, the objective, of course, is to remove enough nitrogen to meet federal state requirements and clean up our base. And we'll start, I know I live in the middle of that, so I can barely get here. But those will be, we should be ready to start connecting to Chatham at the end of the summer of next year, 2021. And that will continue, that so-called phase two. Now, we added our plan to build a sewer plant near the landfill to handle the rest of Harwich. Let me back up because a lot of discussion will fly going into Pleasant Bay, Muddy Creek, Pleasant Bay couple. That's one of our endangered embankments I require you to do. I mention this because I've also continually asked why not to Harwich Port for economic reasons. And there's a couple of easy responses for that. One is, is that Harwich Port does not drain into one of our embankments. It drains directly into the sound. And so right now, that's not part of the regulatory requirements that we take action against. So there's economic reasons to do that, but it's outside the regulatory requirements we have at the moment. The second part is, is that Chatham is, in their agreement, asked us to only hook into them for the watershed that empties into their, into Pleasant Bay. We could, I suppose, go back and renegotiate that at some point, but it makes a lot of sense to keep that going. We also plan to build a sewer plant near the landfill to handle the other part of town, West Harwich, and, you know, basically, Herring River and so on. And after that time, a couple of years ago, our consultant started having discussions with Dennis and Jarmuth about, does it make sense rather to build a plant ourselves to build a plant for all three towns? It seems obvious that one plant versus three plants would be a cost-saving force, not only in building, but in operational cost. And so we've explored that and that's a multi-step process. We had to get a legislation approval just to develop the concept. We live in a bureaucratic state, so we had to get approval. We've been working with a representative from the other two towns on an agreement that makes sense. I consider this, and no one likes giving up some authority to another town. And so we've spent a lot of time on the agreement, be sure it's transparent. We'll probably come to a town meeting, was the next step, would be a vote from the town that they want to enter the agreement. And then after that, they would have to get into final, more discussions on what the costs are and so on. But that at the moment would remove the sewer plant. Though I don't want to get the other towns envious, but we'd be one town in the Cape that would be meeting our needs with all the sewer plants. We'd be going elsewhere from that. But it's a long process and what makes us the more complicated and so it is in the Midwest where it's all handled by bediments. Each house has to be sewn. We only end up sewer-ing or taking care of wastewater about half of our properties because that's what's needed to remove enough nitrogen. One final thought is to keep reminding people that the plan is 40 years out. You'd be crazy to think that that's the final plan. And so we're always looking at, what are the alternatives? Are there better ways of removing rather than sewers? And also to remind ourselves always that one size doesn't fit all. You know, East Harwich makes sense because the houses are close together. Other areas of Harwich, quite frankly, it makes no sense to sewer. If we do that, we'd be better off going to different local systems. We're moving ahead on both sides because we think that will make it, remove the oxygen we need and hopefully it will save us significantly a lot of money. But stay tuned. Because we're having talks now, as we speak, you know, what's the best final design for Harwich in connecting to a joint sewer plant?
In your discussions about who to affiliate with in terms of other towns, are you looking at the fiasco with Dennis Jarmuth and the school versus, the school board versus the select board? And why would you want to sign up to be negotiating with people that that's the way they operate?
That's not a trick question, right? We, seriously, that's been a major part of, not major part, but significant part of discussions going on. Not so much that we don't trust working with Dennis and Jarmuth, but until they reached a resolution on the D Y school system that they did recently, there was not a lot of confidence that Dennis and Jarmuth could come together on a regional plan. Forget Harwich, just them coming together on it. Somewhat surprising to me is that even in the middle of that, basically, the benefits in doubt weigh the discussion and talk they had with the school system. But we've gone into wide open, they've had the discussions and and it's not done thing yet either. We still have to be sure that we are comfortable with the financial benefits and the timing benefits are appropriate. It's important to note that in Harwich, for instance, even though we saved a lot of money on the sewer plant, the major cost of connecting are the connection pipes, you know, the connecting pipes. That's still like 80% of the total cost. But your points are very relevant and they were underlying every discussion we had and occasionally they surfaced to the main topic. But, you know, all three towns signed on to support the legislation when it came forward. It had to be approved by the states, that was a good sign. A couple of towns have already, we haven't brought it up yet. I think both Dennis and Jarmuth have given, at least at Board of Selectmen, have given approval to the draft agreement idea. That comes back for a more formal vote amongst the selectmen in February and then it has to go to town meeting.
To wrap up, thank you, Larry.
Let me just, you're going to wrap up. Before I give it up. I'd be remiss not to remind you that town meeting this year is May 4th and 5th. I've had at least one input, and this comes up every so often, I'm sure, is why don't we do it on a Saturday? I think we'd all appreciate thoughts on that. I don't, I haven't been here as long as Anita has, but I know that's come up to before. As I recall, I don't know if we had more attendance than other towns have either, weekend versus a weeknight. But I'd love to hear, I think we all would, more input on that. If anything we could do to make it easier to get to town meeting, we'd be all for it.
Thank you. So I was going to wrap up on the wastewater issue and saying that, as Larry mentioned, Jamie and Caleb have done a great job compiling the information on the website. But I have to take off my voter information committee hat and put on my librarian hat and say we have paper copies of everything as well if you're like me and reading on a screen gets old. Because I think that the comprehensive wastewater management plan is something like
There's a lot, yeah.
500 pages? I may be off, but we have copies of all of those documents and reports here at the library as well in our reference section. So if you're, you know, looking for some light reading, bring a copy. Yeah, so thank you. Do you have?
I see what you're saying. We're always ready to answer questions too. Joe, I, the other people, Tom, engineer, the wastewater, you'll call. Charlie Summers is our point person right now. We're delighted to answer questions by phone. If you're like me or too lazy to do either, we either.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for coming. I really appreciate it. It was lovely to have you here. And we were thrilled to have you all here in the audience and ask some really great questions. And we'll be back in two weeks on the 28th at 2 o'clock, same time, same place, with Carolyn Carey, who will be talking about the community center and the cultural center and all that goes on there. So we hope to have, no, we hope to have the final lineup done by next week. So you'll be able to see when everyone is scheduled to come from now until the end of March. All right, so thank you so much for coming. All right, so thank you so much for coming.